Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, October 13th, 2014. This is the first budget meeting of the Oregon Village Board. I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Grunier.
Here.
Poole.
Here.
Brethauer.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Staten.
Here.
Bolling. And Boudreaux.
Thank you. Item three is community input. Anyone who would like to address the board tonight? Doesn't look like it. Item four is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the general operating fund in the amount of $116,159.69. We need a motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
You should do this before Bolling.
I was gonna say, let's get this done for Jerry.
I shouldn't, I shouldn't say-
We'll be on the right track.
I shouldn't say that, sorry.
Grunier? Do you want roll call, right?
I'm not, no, I'm gonna have a call for roll call here. I just reached out a little question, I'm sorry.
And now what, we are on item sixteen?
He came back.
All in favor of German? Okay, so we just did the vouchers, Jerry. Did you have questions? We thought we'd be done before you got back. But you got back quicker than we thought.
Luckily, I heard you. No, I don't.
Okay. So again, we have a motion second to approve our vouchers in the amount of $116,159.69. Roll call, please.
Grunier.
Yes.
Bolling.
Yes.
Poole.
Yes.
Staten.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Brethauer.
Yes.
Thank you. Item five, West Netherwood Railroad Crossing. We close approximately two weeks, starting today for repairs.
It's actually, it's actually starting next week, Monday.
Yeah, I was thinking that sign said that twenty-
Well, they put the sign up and it was, the sign had the wrong date or dates, so they redid the sign now. And it, and it looks like it's only gonna be a week of work, but it depends on the weather and everything, so.
Okay.
It's a contractor through the railroad company that's doing it.
Okay. So item six is 2015 budget overview and proposed tax levy and review of general fund revenues. Going into this, I would like to, on behalf of the board, thank the staff for their good work on the budget. I know it's not an easy process, 'cause we're always more requests than we have money for. But I think the staff does a great job of sorting that out, and we respect what they do and appreciate their work, especially bringing us a balanced budget. It saves us from having to make a lot of decisions that we, I think, probably shouldn't be making, 'cause Department heads did. So, thanks to staff for what you've done.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
So, when you sat down, there's a new sheet, this overview sheet, yeah. But we noticed we had a, there was an error in the assessed value in the second part of the calculation, so. And again, I wanna emphasize that this, this increase of about seventeen dollars on average houses, it's a, it's a fluid number, because we haven't received the final, final assessed values from the state, for example. We don't actually know, we think we know what the expenditure restraint level is, so we're still getting some numbers in from the, from the state. But I think the number is, is pretty close to this, so. I will not, as I do in the other years, I'm not gonna read the whole, the whole overview, but I do wanna, second what Steve said, that I wanna, you know, thank to the Department Heads for their hard work on this budget, particularly Lisa, who spent a lot of time with me.
She has our stuff.
I thank you, Steve. The next two meetings are October 20th, the joint meeting with our, with the park board, and then the 22nd is the last meeting. As I mentioned, the, the tax rate did change a little bit from the, it was in the packet now, it's about seventeen dollars and thirty-nine cents. This compares to sixteen dollars and fifty-five cent increase in 2013. The home values did, you know, we are showing, did go up in the village for 2014, so that's having an impact. On page four, we, we talk about the general fund revenues and expenditures. They're increasing about a hundred and some fifty thousand dollars. Show revenue is staying pretty, pretty close to what we've received in the past. I do wanna note that, as the board may recall, we had made the decision that, to increase the budget in 2014, acknowledging that we were not gonna receive the expenditure restraint payment, which we are not in 2015. But we are, but this budget, this 2015 budget will, will qualify for it in 2016. And, you know, the, the number goes up and down depending on what, how the state funds it, how many communities participate. But in 2013, I think it was like a thirty-four thousand dollar payment or something like that, wasn't it, from the state? So it, it's, it's a pretty significant payment, so we, we are definitely gonna qualify for it in the 2016 budget. Highway aids on page five are going up again. At this point, we're holding the recycling grant to a little over thirty-three thousand dollars. The youth center, we are continuing with the, the free rent, the nine thousand dollar payment. And we also are budgeting two thousand dollars for a new furnace. You may recall, when they were here, they were complaining about how, how coal is in the building, and so Gary Dish has worked with them, and we've got money in the budget. I will tell you that I talked to a few members of the youth center today, and it looks like, as of November 1st, they will be on their own. And so, what I'll be asking the board is probably at, probably at the next, I, I think I'll probably start working on the agreement with Matt. Because it'd be nice to get the agreement in place by the October 27th meeting that we have in place before they, they, you know, they cut off from the first, and they're having to do it on November 1st, because that's when they, they've told the county they're gonna do it, so they're getting money from the county, so. So they, they've done a lot of hard, hard work to get where they are.
Sounds like it.
Mm-hmm. As far as wages, we, we do, we do have a two percent across the board in the budget for non-represented employees. The public works staff and the police department secretary, too, these are former ASMEA union employees, are going to receive the, the last market adjustment, I'm sorry, the last market wage adjustment based on the 2013 salary, plus the across the board. So this will be the last of the employees that are getting adjusted based on that survey. And then we'll be asking the board to do another survey next year, which then we'll, you know, talk about how to fund them. The, the new police officer position is gonna be, is fully budgeted in the 2015 budget. And you can actually see that when you go through Dale's budget, that's reflected in, in the increase in the operation line. Per the labor agreement with the police union, they, they are receiving a five percent wage adjustment, but this will be the first year that they would be paying their full share of 6.8 percent of their pension. So everyone will be now paying their full share of their pension, starting in 2015. 2015 is the last year of the three-year adjustment for police sergeants. Next year, and we talked about this somewhat at the finance committee, that we are going to be making the employees pay a little, a little bit more for health insurance next year, and-
Just percentage?
Percentage-wise, excuse me, percentage-wise, thank you for, yeah. 'Cause actually, health insurance, except for physicians plus, went down, I think, right? Yeah. And to, to the point where if we would've kept the same, hi Jeff, we'd've kept the same arrangement, some employees with, with one insurance company would've paid nothing, so we're, we're, those employees would at least be paying twenty-four dollars and forty cents a month. So everyone's gonna be paying something next year. You'll see that there's fewer elections in 2015, which will make Candy and Peggy happy. And then, and then we do, at this point, in the draft budget, we have put ten thousand dollars in for possibly hiring a consultant to assist in finding a new police chief, and I, I think that's gonna get referred to the personnel committee, and then, you know, we'll, we'll talk about it at that, at that level. As I don't think Dale's gonna stay here forever, unfortunately, so.
I didn't hear him say no.
That's true, that's true. That'd be fine with, that'd be fine with me.
They got that on TV.
Yeah. The draft budget does include funding for a new full-time fire chief position, and it's starting in April. And Chief Bloom's gonna be here, and he'll, he'll be talking about that. Lisa has calculated, calculated that's costing, the impact is about eight thousand dollars on the village budget. And the village is now over sixty-one percent of the district as we keep, we keep growing, becoming a larger share of the district. The thing I wanna point out is that we are doing a lot of street work next year. Mark will be, will be quite busy. We, and we'll talk some more remarks here on the, on the 20th, but in between doing the mill and overlays and engineering work, getting ready for some street projects in 2016, and finishing up the streets up in the Tiff II district, we're gonna be spending over six hundred thousand dollars in 2015 on streets, which is pretty significant. We haven't done that in a long time, so.
That's good.
Including, I should note, including resurfacing West Netherwood with the, the payment that we have received from Licon through the road maintenance agreement, maybe, so we're spending their money on that. As I mentioned, the budget does include engineering. We are gonna be asking the board to allow us to go out and hire an engineer to get ready to reconstruct Elm Street, and that would be, that's gonna be the start of replacing the lead water services in that area, South Main Street, and also North Burogue between Jefferson Street and Bathfish Creek area. So that, we'll be looking at engineering this, next year, and then doing that in 2016.
Mike, will that be the last of the old pipes, then?
It's, it's Elm, and I think it's, I think it's also on State and Washington, I believe. I think there's three streets over there, Jerry.
All right.
So we're starting, we're gonna do the first one in 2016.
Okay.
We're continuing to do additional work on the extension of North Perry Parkway, and we anticipate constructing that in 2017, if everything falls into place. The one thing I wanna note is that this has come up numerous times over the last ten years, that we have to do something with the yard waste. But we're gonna be faced with it, we've sort of pushed this issue down the road, we're gonna have to decide. Because the yard waste, if new boarders don't realize, it's right in the way of where the Perry Parkway extension will happen, so. So I told Mark that's gonna be his project next year, to figure out where to, we're gonna find a location for it. On page 11, I talk about the, the bike trail. As we note that we're gonna propose using a combination of 2013 borrowing, some more of the town of Oregon contribution, and then the balance of the 2011 county grant that we're not spending on Phase One, we would spend that on Phase Two of the bike trail, and we would put that in, in early spring. We would submit a, a grant to the DNR in May, hopefully get the grant, and then put the third phase in, in 2016, so. The advantage of doing this is that it's gonna allow us to ask for a lot less money from the, from the DNR, which hopefully will be, hopefully they, they grant it, and plus, we'll be able to say, we need one, you know, one grant to finish the trail out to the Fishatory, so hopefully it's a very attractive grant.
I would interject here, I walked that trail a couple days ago. It's not done yet, but the, the base gravel's down, and I think people will really like it.
How do you think it's gonna be for the road bikes?
Not good with gravel.
Yeah.
I don't think, but the next thing, we start to look at blacktop, and the Rotary has committed ten to twenty thousand dollars to start that process, so. And, you know, everybody'd be thinking, something that we might get to lead a fundraising drive to push that higher from the blacktop, too. Probably quite good.
No, yeah. Then, last but would point on there was that we do have money, as we, in the budget, to continue to work with the stakeholders on the east side of Highway 14 for possible annexation, and, and then eventually the urban service area amendment for that, on that side of Highway 14. As I noted at the last board meeting, the day and com expenses are decreasing in 2015. I just handed something out, see this in front of you, everyone's got it.
Yeah.
It's something from our lobbyists. You can take it with you, and we can talk about it when we get to Dale's budget, but it looks like the county is tying in, I'm not reading too much into this, they're tying in the, the, them taking over more of the day and com expenses and putting up the towers if they get rid of the 911 center board, if that's, it looks like there's a, something, something-
Yeah.
That is Accurate, yep. So we'll see how that all happens with them. The senior center operating budget is going up almost twenty thousand dollars, and this is due to the, this is the third, third year of the senior center agreement, so we're implementing the full effect of it, so.
Excuse me, Mike, is that because Dunn pulled out, is that?
Well, it's, it's, our use has increased.
Okay.
And, and the towns and Brooklyn, rather than when we signed the agreement the first year, and with, rather than making us assume the entire increase for us, they allowed us to feather it in over three years. So, this is now, it's hitting this year.
And that's where they now have cars, so they swipe and keep track of the amount of use from each municipality?
Right, right. So, yeah, we, now I remember that. So we've got Accurate data to the actual users of the facility. Yeah. How about the caseworkers and things like that, do they track that also?
Everything is tracked. They actually spend a lot of time tracking the, the use of the center.
Yes, they do.
Yep.
Yes. They have the cards now, so anytime you go in, they sign in. They have, I think they have almost eight hundred people now signing in. They went to the same thing that Stoughton has.
When you say eight hundred, darling, you mean a month?
No, it's eight, eight hundred people that come and go from there.
Yeah, and what, and what period?
I don't know, they all have cards, so anytime you come in for anything, you sign in.
Okay.
That's how many people have cards now.
Oh.
Before, they didn't have that at all.
Down the last, the last sheet, as, as the buildings and the equipment get a little bit older, we're having to increase some of the light items for, for maintenance. The second point, notes that since 2004, this budget continues to practice of not using fund balance for the general fund operations, which is very important, as every time we go out to borrow, that's something that Moody's always looks, they'd look at that. And then finally, I, I know one boarder was probably wondering what we're doing with the 2014 deficit, so I, I put a note in here, as I look across the table here.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike.
Sorry, Jerry.
That's okay.
He's teasing you. So, Lisa, Lisa and I, you know, we, we talked to the board, like, we, we received the $207,000 payment from ATC, and we thought about, you know, taking the money and dividing it up and putting it into the capital funds, and then leaving it there, and then running, see what happened in 2014, and then having to probably transfer the money back in the general fund, so that we didn't have deficit spending. So we decided to just do the opposite. We decided to leave it in the general fund, you know, keep it in there, then once we close out the expenditures at the end of 2014, we'll come back to the board and transfer the balance of it out to the capital funds, and we'll do it that way. We, we really do not want to show deficit spending in the general fund, because we anticipate doing some borrowing over the next five to six years, and it's just something you don't wanna have to explain to the, to Moody's when they're, when they're, when you're on the call with them, explaining it. So, we're very fortunate that we received the ATC money. So we'll, we'll get through the year without showing deficit spending. We're pretty confident that at the end, we'll be able to transfer some money into the equipment and into the streets as well, so.
So are there questions or comments from any trustees?
I was wondering if you could explain just very briefly what the expenditure restraint payment is, how does that work?
Sure. So, the, the state gives you incentive, Doug, to knock over a certain amount in your general fund, and if you do that, they, they actually pay you for not doing that. Like, for example, Lisa's calculated that we, we cannot go over 5.8 million dollars in the general fund, the total expenditure, and if you do that, then you qualify for a payment in your, in the subsequent budget. It's, it's an incentive that's been in there for quite some time. And, and the reason the, the payment goes up and down is because, you know, depending on how many communities are qualified, you know, qualify for it, depending on how you divide up the money. Like I said, the last year, I think it was like thirty-four thousand dollars, so it, it, in the past, it used to be like eight to nine thousand dollars, but they really have increased the funding for it, or there's less, there's just less, fewer communities that are qualifying for it. So every once in a while, we, we tell the board that, you know, we get, we qualify four or five years in a row, and then one year we'll take a hit, we'll raise the, we'll raise the general fund expenditures, you know you're gonna lose it, and then you, and you, and you qualify for it again, you just. Because at some point, you gotta raise your general fund expenditures if you're gonna, if you add a, a staff person, for example, you gotta take the hit that year, then.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Anyone? Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Lisa, any comments you wanna make, and answer that, or we all, so?
You did a great job.
Thank you. Okay, so we're due to start, we're a little ahead, six o'clock.
Steve, can I just, can I just mention about the general fund revenues on pages? And, and I, in the overview, Lisa and I sort of touched on it, but I just wanted to note, like, on page two, this, you'll find this now under the tabs, is 2015 budget, page two. I just wanna note that we did increase the, on page two of it, we did increase some of the building permit fees. We've been pretty conservative on that, and we, we were somewhat comfortable, and we didn't go up a lot, we just had a couple thousand dollars, so. In case you're wondering, we just, we were looking at the projections, and we're looking at what's coming down the road, so that's why we increased that a little bit. On page three, the second line from the bottom, the senior center intergovernmental charge, you see that we, we're gonna get a hundred thousand in this, this year, but that's going down a little bit again, that's a reflection on the, on the agreement. And then the last page, page four, we're transferring, this is the payment, this transfer-in payment. You can see of the 276,000, 273 of that is from the water and sewer, and that's a calculation that Lisa runs. And that's what the utility pays for using the buildings and so forth. Payment in lieu of taxes, yep, thank you.
Can you explain, explain that again? I see the 273 under Department Head, is that what you're looking at?
So, yeah, that, that, there's, there's more, there's 276,000 dollars in, under my column, 276, 850. Of that, 273 of that is a payment from water and sewer, and a lot Lisa.
Right. At the end of the year, when we file our PSC report, there's a calculation that's done within the PSC report. It's called a payment in lieu of taxes, that the utility pays the village for not paying taxes on all of their property and, is that equipment?
I think so, too, yeah.
And equipment. So, because they're a tax-exempt entity underneath the village, they're not taxed, and this is a way that the village kind of recoups some of that tax money from them.
And what's a PSC report?
It's the Public Service Commission report that's done every year. It, it takes, you know, it's, it's basically a financial report that they do, and it, it's a big line, it's like a whole-page calculation, and I can't remember every line item on it. There's, there's two separate calculations, one for the water side and one for the sewer side, because they're two separate enterprise funds. It's taken all of their revenues and the expenses, and then there's, there's a modifier in there, and it's, it's a long calculation.
Yeah, that's a good enough explanation. Thanks.
It's very-
Any other questions or comments, Doug?
I just have a brief question, reading the budget sheets.
Mm-hmm.
The Department Head budget, Department Head budget is submitted, is that right? You have the submitted budget?
Mm-hmm.
And then the administrative budget would be your response, or?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
And then, and then the last column will be, is when the board, so, so, I mean, technically, I'm, I'm charged with presenting my budget, Doug, to the board, and then, you know, then the board adopts this as a preliminary budget. The board sets the public hearing day for November 17th, and then when the board adopts the budget on November 17th, then Lisa moves all those, all those numbers in, under the adopted column. So that way, you can, then you can go back and, and see, you know, the history of it and so forth.
Other questions? Anything else we staff at this time?
No.
So next item is joint meeting with Cable TV Committee, do you have more folks that are coming? Okay, if you wanna come to cable, then. Okay, if you want to come to cable, then. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, sure.
So we're, we're the Cable TV Committee, welcome to Liz and Kirm, and we're on item nine, discussion possible approval regarding the 2015 Cable TV budget, and it's pages 94 through 98 in our binder. So I think we're ready. Kind of go ahead with your explanation on your budget.
Okay, if you look at page 95, I'll call that our program report, or what we've been doing for the year, not much different than we've been doing in years past, kind of doing the same thing, the village board meetings, school board meetings, Chamber of Commerce meeting, things at the library, a lot of school activities, so if it happens in Oregon, we're probably there with a camera, recording it. We've made some big improvements this year in our infrastructure, we got some back franchise payments from the town of Oregon, they had been paying us $2,000 a year, and I guess we forgot to ask them for it for a couple of years, going back five years, really, so they sent us $2,000 a year for four years, or $8,000. Then I asked Liz, did we ask them for 2014, and no, we hadn't, so we did, so in essence, we got $10,000 from the town of Oregon. With that, we were able to improve much of our infrastructure in the office, and improve our ability to broadcast, like at the Summerfest Parade, graduation, and now football games, even football games on the road. So that has been a big improvement for us this year. If you could skip ahead to page 97, we've been able to do a pretty good job at estimating our budgets, projecting revenue as well as expenditures, we do this by the quarter, and if you look the balance beginning October 1st was 915784, we projected ending balance somewhere around 6900 at the end of December, we're going into 2015. And so then if you go back to page 96, we've got a spreadsheet of the budgets that we've had from 2013, 14, and 15, and showing from the village $112,000, other income that we have. Forgot to mention under the program report that we've added an underwriting section or program at Cable TV, it'd be like sponsorships, in the report, I said four sponsorships, unfortunately, one of those sponsors went out of business just last week, so we have three signed up, we have several others that are considering, so we're able to then have some additional revenue from those sponsorships, so that's increased our ability as well. And you see that under the underwriting section, we're projecting about $7,500 for next year. So we've been pretty good at managing our budget, the health insurance has come down, that's because of advancing, how do we call that, Liz?
Age.
And going on to social security and Medicare, so that has saved quite a bit. With that, then, we're able to put more hours for Tim Olson and Frank Caruso, and with that, then, we're able to do more and better work. Anything to add, Liz?
You're doing good, Kirm, keep going.
All right, with that, then, are there any questions on what's been presented?
I was wondering what you would estimate the viewership to be, do you have any idea what that number might be?
In the past, we were given a report from Charter, but they, it's not required anymore by them, but we judge by our income, by the franchise fees that come in, and it's been steady or even increasing, so we assume it's still around 2,000, give or take, you know, but if that many people pay at least 5% of their bill toward the franchise fee, then that's kind of how we judge how many people are still watching.
And we get a lot of comments from people, we really enjoyed seeing the football game, we enjoyed seeing Summerfest Parade, with our new capabilities for graduation, and like the Summerfest Parade where we're airing it and live streaming, we have the number of hits that show up, that people have connected on the computer, and for instance, graduation, there were 200 people watching on the internet, and the football games, there's 100 or so people that connect with that. In addition, we've improved our Facebook page, and daily, we put up what's happening on Facebook, the schedule of events, what's being shown, so we had those things together, we're, we're out there in the community.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Just curious, I see the anticipated income from the town of Oregon is going down, do you recall why that is?
Oh, it's been $2,000 a year.
Okay.
And, and the income this past year was, they were catching up on years that they hadn't paid.
Yeah, I just happened to look at the number now, and I, I already forgot. But, you know, it's gonna be a long night.
And we, I visited with them last Monday night, and they said, you just forgot to ask.
Right, right, no, that's funny. And I, I probably should know the answer to this one, too, but what is underwriting?
It, it's like sponsorship.
Okay.
If you listen to NPR or Wisconsin Public Television, they'll say this program underwritten by.
Got it.
I, I think board members have been on the board for a while, maybe, this is when Randy Way, I think, was on Cable TV, we were worried that, that they were actually gonna go out of business because of the way they were spending their fund balance, and I think it's just, they've done a fabulous job the last two or three years, if you look at their fund balance, they have really got control of their budget, they deserve a big pat on the back for that, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
Well, I have to say, Ron Vernon really put us in good shape, using, we use QuickBooks, and Ron did a good job at this, I have 30 years of doing budgeting for the state, and big numbers, and so when you lay it out in this format, and monthly, can project what your expenses are, and then based that on the expected revenues, you should be able to do a pretty good job.
Are the bugs in the streaming work out now, so that the program is continuous and doesn't come and go some?
Dan would be a better one to answer that question, and it's, we've changed some of our equipment in the office, Charter helping us do that, but the Charter lines are also aging, and it's carrying it from our station to Charter and then back, and Dan, anything to add to that? It's just, we had Charter in town here, and they set up at every link between here and the office, and tried to track down the problem, and I think it's just aging infrastructure there.
Okay, and I didn't intend that to be a critical question, but I, I have had a couple people ask, I know Bill Leibig has a couple times, he's said that, when he's called me the day after meeting, that, and he's watching it at home, and he said that, just as we got to a critical part, that he didn't get what he wanted, he had to call me, and I said, that's because Dan's back there pushing the button for us. So I was just curious, I mean, that's a great enhancement, I think, as time goes on.
I got an email from him today saying, thanks, Dan.
So are there more questions for Liz or Kirm? Again, we appreciate the job you're doing, it's a great benefit to the community, and a lot of things people have become aware of that they wouldn't otherwise if you weren't doing what you're doing, I know I've mentioned it, I see Kirm shows up on the camera all over, it seems like, so.
Our committee would like to really thank Kirm for volunteering his expertise in the accounting area.
Yeah, good, we appreciate that, too. Any further questions? So we would need a motion to approve this section of the budget.
So much.
Second.
Thank you. I should mention, too, for the, the two new members, that we go through, and we do a section at a time, so when we get done, we have discussed, looked at, discussed, and approved the entire budget, which will do its entirety at the budget hearing on November 17. So we have a motion second to approve the 2015 Cable TV budget, any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so item 11 is pages 37, 38, it's the fire EMS protection and EMS budgets, discussed and possible approvals.
And then in, and then in the packet for tonight, in the book, there's also the actual fire district budget, so.
Welcome, chief.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll give you a quick summary of our budget, and see if you have questions, I'm sure you'll have questions. The Oregon Fire and EMS has been operating on a pretty much flat budget, if not a reduced budget for the last couple of years, and we, I think, have a good budget this year, we've increased slightly, but have absorbed some of those increases with revenue. The commission asked me to put three budgets together this year, and it's bad enough having to put one together, but three, wasn't bad, we put a status quo budget, same staffing, same expenditures, and pretty much everything, other than the things that you have to increase, like fuel and that, repairs. The second budget was a full-time fire chief, I don't know whether you know it or not, but I am giving up the chief's position early next year, well, about May next year, I think, we'll probably have a new chief onboard. I, I've been at this long enough, it's time to reduce a little bit, so. And the third budget was a half-time chief, the same as what I'm doing, and a full-time firefighter IB tech. The commission, after reviewing the budget and a lot of discussion, decided to go with the full-time chief's position, and in addition to adding a full-time chief, or hiring a full-time chief, add some paid-on-premise hours, we operate with some paid-on-premise hours now, and the, they added 48 hours per week of paid-on-premise hours, which gave us kind of a blend, actually, of the second, third proposal, where we got some firefighter IB tech coverage and a full-time chief. The budget includes the four-year labor agreement, everything that was spelled out in the labor agreement, which I believe we're pretty close to write, I think we might have one community yet that...
We haven't done it, Dave.
Pardon?
We haven't done it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, maybe two communities. It, it also has a 3% increase for our paid-on-call, paid-on-premise people, which will give them 25 cents an hour increase. And with that, all of those changes in the budget, we're looking at a little over $8,300 increase that the village would have, it comes out pretty close, I think, to 2%, just a hair under 2%, I think, increase in what the village, the rest of, the remainder of the costs of the budget, I think it goes up about $76,000. The remainder of the costs will be absorbed in mainly EMS fees. We did discuss and plan on implementing base rate change in the ambulance fee, which will generate about $24,000 a year, and so with that, I should mention also that, you know, a couple of years ago, we were, we were pretty well strapped financially, as most governments were, but in the past two years, with cuts and, and some painful changes at the fire station, the entire department has pulled it together, and we have, now have about a 15 to 20% fund balance, which, 15 to 20% of our total annual budget, which I think is what the auditors recommend, is anywhere from 15 to 25%, something like that. So we're, we're in good shape financially, we're, we're keeping the increase, I think, to a minimum, and making some positive changes in the department that will help us get through the next 2015. For that, anybody have questions?
Questions, comments, Eric?
Just one question, under EMS department, on our budget pages here, I know you said something about the paid-on-call and paid-on-premise increase, is that what is reflected in EMS volunteer reimbursement, is that why that's going up so much?
Yeah, they actually do have your budget, I forgot that was in here.
Okay.
It's in the very front, it's on page six, on the very front of the catalog, or front of our budget, that's what they have, $30,000 increase?
Well, I, I think, right, Lisa, is that you and Eric?
That's, that's a combination of the full-time chief and the additional paid-on-premise hours, yes.
Okay. Are you still trying to recruit, I assume, more volunteers, how's that going?
We are, and actually, two weeks from this last Saturday, we have interviews, I think we have three EMTs and four firefighters that we're interviewing, so we're constantly getting applications in, constantly adding, you know, not all of them work out, but we had two or three each time, usually.
Okay, very good.
Problem is, and, and everybody in the county, everybody in the state, everybody in the country is having, is we don't have long-term volunteers anymore, we don't have, we have one volunteer, actually, that doesn't take any pay, everybody else is paid-on-call, paid-on-premise, but, you know, every, you look at every department, this county, and they're short help, you just gotta keep going after them. The young people that are coming in today are looking for a career, and so they're looking at two or three years of experience, and if they're lucky, they're moving on to a career position. You know, 10, 20, probably 20, 30 years ago, a small bedroom community like this had a lot of businesses in town, that business owners, and we, we have two or three businesses that allow our, our people to leave during the day and go to fire calls, but everybody, when the whistle sounded, came to the fire station, and those fathers and grandfathers brought their kids up in that air, and they joined, and it was a family thing, you know, and we just, we don't have that kind of commitment anymore across the country, and it, it's, it's hard to hang on to long-term paid-on-call, paid-on-premise firefighters, who are working at it.
Good, doing a good job, thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
I guess I would have one, thanks, chief, I wasn't at the meetings where they discussed the full-time chief.
Excuse me, Jerry, could you get up closer to your mic?
Sure.
Thank you.
I wasn't at the, any of the meetings where the full-time chief was decided, or the decision was made to have a full-time chief, what are the advan- What are the advantages of that?
Well, probably the biggest advantage is having enough time to do everything. You know, at twenty hours a week, you just, you maintain, basically, and you don't have the time to do the extra things. You know, there, there's things like, that should be studied, such as Oregon going to paramedics. I think it's time that the Oregon Fire Department, probably a couple of years ago, should take that step and become a paramedic ambulance service. That, we're, we're a community that's far enough away from the hospital that we need the care immediately at the patient's side, not waiting for a paramedic to come from the city. There's programs that recruitment retention of our paid-on-call, paid-on-premise people. You know, there, there's a lot more that could be done, probably, by getting out there and talking to companies about having their people get interested in firefighting and letting them go during the day, so we have a stronger workforce. We got some real good employers in Oregon that do let their, in fact, one employer lets several of their employees leave during the day and go to calls, which is tremendously helpful to our response. But we need, we need more help. Those types of things, I guess.
And, and Jerry, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, that the, what the commission looked at was either hiring a full-time firefighter who would be going on calls, or hiring a full-time chief, but the chief is also going to be responding to calls
Yes.
during, during the day. So it, it's, there's a double benefit. And I will say selfishly, it's gonna be, it'll be nice to have a chief around so that we, we can meet with, you know, the chief during the day, probably invite him to department head meetings. And I think it's very hard for, for Chief Bloom to be doing all this at twenty hours a week.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's a good question.
How, how that evolved at this time.
Sure. Is it typical, the community of our size, of around ten thousand, would have a full-time chief? For other many variables, it's hard to say.
Yeah, there is variables. But, you know, in the proximity, proximity that we have to the city of Madison, there's a lot more going on in our county and our village than some communities of ten or twelve thousand.
Yeah, the district is more, I mean, the district was what, we're nine?
District's a little over fourteen, I think.
Oh, that's true.
So a community of fourteen, fifteen thousand is gonna have a full-time chief?
Yeah. I'm certainly in favor of it. I mean, things gone through the commission have been well, we'll get there on.
Yep.
That's good. Other questions or comments?
Actually, I have a, probably, same, probably, answer will suffice for my next question, but it's, I noticed the volunteer reimbursement has gone up significantly.
That's, that's the additional paid-on-premise.
That's the additional quarter you discovered, brought up before?
Additional what?
Twenty-five cent raise, is that what?
They had, they had in the additional forty-eight hours of paid-on-premise that we're gonna use for staff.
You're gonna be adding?
Yes.
Okay.
Both of them added together, actually.
Yeah, those are the two big, two big items in your budget that I noticed.
So I think we're ready for a motion and further discussion.
Steve, can we just mention one thing? If you could turn to page thirty-seven, Lisa has to explain something.
Oh, okay, sure.
There has to be a little clarification on what the increase. The increase will be right around eight thousand dollars, like Chief Bloom said. But in working with the town of Dunn today and getting her equalized value, it was discovered that last year, the wrong equalized value was submitted. To do the calculation, they had submitted their school district equalized value and not the fire district equalized value. So depending on what the commission wants to do, there may need to be an adjustment for two thousand and fourteen for all of the communities because the town of Dunn overpaid. And it was about a, it was about a forty-five-hundred-dollar increase for the village of Oregon that is technically our portion of it. So if you look at the projected on page thirty-seven, the actual projected, if the commission decides to do an adjustment for the error in the calculation, the village's portion would be four hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. So then, when you look over to the admin column for two thousand and fifteen, that number will actually be four hundred and thirty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars. Those would be, those are the numbers. And we just, I just found that out like late, well, early this afternoon, that the calculation wasn't correct.
Wouldn't it be logical to try and do that in fourteen, though?
Well, most of the communities wouldn't have it in their budget.
Okay.
So we're, we're gonna, when we, because the towns haven't even seen these numbers yet.
Okay.
So I would be sending them their two thousand and fifteen budget amount with the adjustment for two thousand and fourteen, so that they could work it into their budgets for two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. So, are we okay?
So I, I mean, my recommendation, I think, would be that we would, we would, if the board wants to, I would adopt the correct amount, obviously, the four thirty-two.
It's four thirty-two, seventy-five, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So we, I think, are ready for a motion and second on this, with that correct amount?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So we have motion second to approve the fire EMS protection EMS budgets at four hundred and thirty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars. Any further questions or comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Chief, and congratulations on retirement, and thanks for years of service here.
Thank you.
So, so that I understand, page thirty-seven, total fire protection, is that a roll-up of the number that we just approved? Or is that a separate line item?
That's the roll-up, because there's, there's the four hundred and thirty-two thousand, seventy-five, and then there's the thirty-five thousand dollars for supplies, which is, we get a grant from the state. And if you look in the revenues, there's a revenue that comes in for that. It's, we're just used as a pass-through. There's a revenue that comes through that we receive, and then we just turn around and we issue the check to the fire district.
So it's in and out?
Yes.
So, so really, the four sixty-two, one seventy-four?
Is like our, is our portion.
And will that change now that we've changed the admin amount for other contractual services? Or will that stay the same?
No, it'll, it'll increase by the four thou, forty-nine-hundred dollars. From what you see in there, the four hundred and twenty-seven.
Yeah.
And the thirty-five brings you to the four sixty-two.
Yeah.
But now, the first number is four thirty-two plus the thirty-five. So that brings it up to the four thirty-nine or, or four sixty-nine.
Is it important to motion on that, since that's the total fire protection budget?
You could. I mean, we, we did note that we corrected the number at four, but it's up, up to the board.
Which budgeted number are we gonna approve, the total fire protection budget number?
Well, what, what was noted for the motion was that the four thirty-two number was being used on this page versus the four twenty-seven. But if the board wants to redo the motion, that's your preference, if you wanna do that.
I mean, technically, technically, we approved what's on that page, right? Including the thirty-five thousand plus the changed number.
Yep.
So we did approve everything that's on that page.
Yep.
But if you'd like, we have another motion for that, that other total that we have, you want to.
This is my first time through the process here at the village. And so I just wanna make sure that if that is a rolled-up number, that I have this conversation. And if we're good with the motion that we approved, then that's fine with me.
No, you guys are doing well. My first year, I didn't ask any questions, I don't think. I was trying to figure it out. So you're off to a good start, better than I was.
And then, Steve, we should, we also have to deal with the page thirty-eight, the EMS. Again, this is, this is a, a grant that the district gets.
Okay.
It's on page thirty-eight.
Yeah. Okay, so we have page thirty-eight. Any further comments on that, Mike, or just a grant?
Every, every year was the same thing, yeah.
So we need a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, not curious, thank you. Now we're ready for the police budget?
Yes, we are.
So item twelve, again, thanks, Chief, we appreciate it. Welcome, Rudy. So item twelve is the police budget, discussion possible approval. And again, for the new members, we go through all of these and approve items A through K at the end. So item A is police department, pages thirty-one and thirty-two.
And Steve, I also wanna note that you look in the packet for tonight, under the agenda, there's Dale's memo.
Yeah.
And then the equipment. Rudy or Dale are gonna probably refer to the memos, maybe, when he has it.
Yeah.
Being, being the good cop that I am, good cop never goes anywhere without backup, which is why Rudy is here.
You're a wise man.
We were wondering who Rudy is, anyway. You talk about her so much, so this is good.
So are you leading off, Rudy, or Dale?
Well, where would you like me to start? I mean, I, if you'd like me to go over the budget memo, I will. I normally don't like to read anything that you can read yourself, but...
Yeah, but I think enough to help people who are viewing on TV would be good.
This memo will provide more detailed information about the two thousand and fifteen police department budget. It will specifically identify accounts that were increased and will provide a reason for the adjustments and provide further information related to our vehicle and equipment requests. Starting in September, two thousand and fourteen, we were provided with approval to increase our police department secretary-to-position from fifteen hours a week to nineteen hours a week through the end of the year. This was approved to address the backlog in the dispatch area. With the approval of the additional four hours a week, our police secretary is now working mornings, Monday through Thursday. Although this has only been in effect for approximately one month, we have already been able to see the beginnings of a, of a reduction in our backlog. And the administrative services supervisor, AKA Rudy, has also been able to accomplish many more tasks due to the fact that she is able to work in her office an extra full day per week versus working in the dispatch area. I am asking that the secretary-to-position be approved for nineteen hours per week on a permanent basis. These extra hours would impact our budget at a cost of four thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-eight cents per year. The salaries operations account has an increase due to the new officer who was hired this past August. In two thousand and fifteen, the budget will reflect an entire year for this officer's salary versus the partial year expense in two thousand and fourteen. These are the only changes in personnel. There were three factors taken into consideration, reference the increase in the account called other contractual services for two thousand and fifteen. The increase is related to a change in how we access our records management system and adding technical support for our arbitrator system and setting aside funds for the upcoming police chief recruitment process. By way of explanation, our employees currently access our records management system by utilizing what are called either a net motion license or a Citrix license. Either license allows our, our mobile users to access the records management system. In two thousand and fourteen, the majority of our users utilize the Citrix licenses, which cost two hundred and fifty dollars each per year. After reviewing the cost of each license, we determined that it was more cost-effective in the long run to purchase net motion licenses and decrease the amount of Citrix licenses. Net motion license costs three hundred and twenty-five dollars for the first year, which is more than the Citrix license. But then, in every subsequent year, it only costs sixty dollars. Whereas with Citrix, you're constantly paying two hundred and fifty dollars every year. We also allocated funds for technical support, reference our arbitrator system, which is the in-squad video recording system. The last component is the police chief recruitment process, which we anticipate will cost approximately ten thousand dollars. The uniform account remained the same as two thousand and fourteen. We will, however, need to purchase uniforms and a vest for the new police chief, along with a replacement vest for one officer. We will recover fifty percent of the vest cost for the chief and the officer via a bulletproof vest grant. The tire account was doubled in two thousand and fifteen, and this is out of necessity. In the past, this account has routinely gone into the red due to consistently rising tire prices. With this in mind, the account was adjusted to more accurately cover the real expenses for tires during the budget year. We do receive state pricing for tires, but the reality is the tires for the Dodge Chargers specifically, and to a lesser expense, the Ford SUVs that we are now purchasing are more expensive than what we were using on the Ford Crown Victorias, which are now obsolete. In the police vehicle account, we are asking for approval to purchase one Ford Explorer in two thousand and fifteen. My understanding was, is that in prior budget years, it was fairly common to request two vehicles per year. So the fact that we're only going with one in two thousand and fourteen represents a savings of approximately twenty-four thousand over prior year's request. In the past, we have only requested funds to cover the actual price of the vehicle in this account. We would then take funds from the account entitled communication repairs in the amount of somewhere between eight and ten thousand to cover the actual setup expenses required to make the vehicle police-ready. And what that means is, you know, we, we purchase a vehicle, whether it's a Crown Victoria, a Ford Explorer, whatever, it's, it's just a base vehicle. In order to make it a police vehicle, we have to put lights, lights on it, siren, prisoner cage, striping. We have to add the in-car video, the radios, the plastic seats, all that other stuff. That costs money. This resulted in this account being consistently over-budget each year. And so in an effort to document the true cost of purchasing and outfitting a police patrol vehicle, we will now be budgeting for both the vehicle and its setup costs out of the police vehicle account only. Again, we think this is just a matter of, of good budgeting and, and to more accurately help you understand the real costs involved in these, in these different categories. We have also attached a list of vehicles assigned to the police department. You have a, should have a two thousand and fourteen and a two thousand and fifteen list, so you can have a better understanding of what is currently in our fleet and what we expect to have in the fleet for the calendar year two thousand and fifteen. We recently auctioned off, I think, I think we've gotten rid of four squads currently. We, and four squads and a motorcycle. And we've got a few vehicles yet to go yet, but these have been, were taken out of service and have been sent to auction. Although some of our accounts did increase for two thousand and fifteen, other accounts decreased. In comparison to past years, we are pleased to present a combined vehicle and equipment budget, which is, makes up the majority of our, of our capital expenditures. This, these two accounts have decreased thirty-three percent from last year. Other notable items include a plan to replace aging portable radios over a three-year period. We'll be doing three, three radios per year during that time in an effort to spread out the financial impact on the budget. In order to be able to accomplish this, we had to order replacement batteries now, which will allow us to extend the usefulness of our current radios. We've also added an additional radar speed sign at the village's request, which will be installed on Jefferson Street at Ash Street. This is a brief summary of our two thousand and fifteen Oregon Police Department budget. We look forward to discussing this with you and answering any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Dale. So, any questions or comments in general?
I'll be glad to start.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanna commend the department, the chief and the whole department on the positive changes I see. I see a lot of savings here, and that's always good. And the beauty of that is that you're, it looks like you're gonna be saving money without reducing the coverage of the community. And the beauty of that is that it looks like you're going to be saving money without reducing the coverage of the community. So, thank you. Have a question on the equipment. I see the, is there, I remember the command trailer. Is that?
That's going, that's going to auction as soon as we can figure out how. It didn't come with a title, it was part of the 1033 federal program. Right now, it, all we have is a state serial number. We're working with the state to try and figure out what's needed in order for us to be able to get rid of that, but that is scheduled, that will be gone before the end of this year.
Okay, no, I just, I didn't see it on here anywhere. Just wondering what happened to it, that's all. How many miles a year do you put on the average squad, just through the patrol squads?
Matt, you can help me out, but I'm going to guess it's probably in the neighborhood of 30,000.
Yeah, I'd say between 30 to 30,000. I mean, we've had up to, I mean, again, it depends with staffing and everything else. If we're fully staffed and they're out there 24 hours a day, we can get up to, you know, 40 to 50,000 in a year.
So, how, how do you determine when it's time to dispose of a vehicle, a patrol vehicle?
When, when they, when they start, when it goes from nickel and diming you to death to a buck and a quarter to three bucks.
So, there's no, it's not like there's a mileage point?
No, the, you know, I know for many years, coming from the state, the state used to come up with these, what I felt were very arbitrary numbers that, you know, you couldn't, you could not get rid of a car unless it reached X amount of miles. You know, that, that works well on paper. It's not very realistic, it's not very functional, because as anybody that's ever known to, that has ever owned a vehicle knows, they don't all die at the same time and at the same rate. And so, you know, we do have some vehicles with higher mileage that are still in the fleet, but right now, they're, they're not costing us anything. And they're in relatively decent shape, and we can still continue to use them, and we will continue to use them until that's not the case anymore.
Okay, all right. That is a significant change in the logic that I think that used to be used, so thank you. I'll switch over now to the radar speed sign. That's going to be a very positive thing, I think, on the Ash, Jefferson and Ash there. Is there any chance that we could put, or what do you, how do you, let me ask the Chief this, or the staff. What, how do you feel about adding another one down on Highway 138? Because I know during rush drive time, people sail off the Highway 14 and if, if the light is green down by a quick trip, I know they've got a pretty good head of steam going on. Any thoughts about having one there or?
Well, I certainly don't think it's a bad idea. I just, you know, again, that's, that's something that we would certainly not oppose. And if somebody said, you know, we've got the money to do something like that, I'd have no problem.
What the rest of the board, how the rest of the board feels about that? Because I'm seeing a lot of savings here, and I think one more of those speed, radar speed indicators down there would be a benefit.
I guess I'd ask, we wait till we get to item K here Jerry?
Sure.
Right now, I'm just looking for general questions based on what Dale had to report. And we'll go through each of these items A through K and try to scope them in then if we can.
Fair enough.
Sounds all right, okay.
Those are my questions, thanks Chief.
Anything else in general from anybody? Okay, so we'll go to item A, pages thirty-one and thirty-two, which is the overall Police Department budget. Any comments here from Dale or any staff or questions from trustees?
I think this goes back to the comment we make in the overview that this reflects now the new position being fully budgeted for the year.
Yeah.
So, that's why we see the impact on the budget for that.
Okay. We'll go on to item B, Police Services in Town, page thirty-three.
I do have a comment about that. I just received this from Denise, the town clerk, about quarter to three this afternoon that at their October seventh town board meeting, the board voted to decrease the hours of service from twenty hours to ten hours per month out in the township. So, I asked Dale if with that decrease, if we should continue to do that. He's going to talk to his staff on Thursday, right?
Yeah, we have a staff meeting on Thursday, and because this is relatively new information, I'd like to have the opportunity to talk it over with them and see what their feelings are regarding that. And then I will report back to Mike, hopefully by this Friday, on where we think we should go from here.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Okay, so we'll go to item C, Police Community Academy, page thirty-four. I take it we're not doing that this year?
We're not doing that this year. I think we've got enough other things to be concerned about, and I think that's, again, it will allow for a new chief coming in next year to kind of reevaluate what's been done in the past and decide what they want to do going forward.
Yeah, I think that's a wise decision at this time. So, item D, Police Building, page thirty-five. Any comments from staff or questions from trustees?
I just think I wanted to note that this started a couple of years ago that I think, I think the department's gotten a handle, well, I say that with knock on wood on the HAC system over there. I think we're using less utilities, and I think it's running more efficiently, so it's actually, the use is going down. The cost is going down.
I can tell you, you know, we have motion sensor lights in most of the, most of the rooms there. And I, Rudy has told me on a number of occasions, I need to move around more because the lights in my office keep going off. So.
Don't hesitate Rudy, to be sure that happens.
Every now and then I have to rock back in the chair just to get the lights to come on again.
Or slap your hands, right?
Hey Rudy, don't hesitate to speak up any place you want to here, it's fine.
It's a significant, it's a significant decrease, the projected 2014 over the budgeted. The amount of money you're saving is quite significant.
I believe so. And, and that was, we, when we looked, when we looked at last year's or this year's budget and, and where we wanted to be next year, we wanted to be, we wanted to be as accurate as possible. We wanted to be able to maintain what we have now. We're, I don't believe in any stretch of the imagination that we're taking a step backwards in, in any area. And I, I think it's a very realistic budget. I'm satisfied with it. I believe the, the staff is satisfied with it. I think we're, we're going to be able to do everything that we've done in the past and keep doing the things that we want to do in the future. So, we, but we also saw things that we thought were, were fat, that, that, you know, that could be trimmed. I always like to look at things in terms of wants and needs. And we started out by making sure that the needs were all addressed. And then, you know, there's always things that you want. But if you don't really need them to do the business that, that you're getting paid to do, then, you know, they get, they get set aside for now. We also, you know, there's nobody in the department that doesn't realize what both the department and the village have been through this year. And that was kind of front and center in how we looked at 2015. It's like, you know, it's, it's our responsibility to hold up, you know, our end of, our end of the, the whole effort that the village is making to make ends meet. And so, we, we really wanted to do that without, you know, having some kind of negative impact on the department.
Anyway, thank you for that. Okay, we'll go to item E, Uniforms, page thirty-six.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm assuming this is based on union contract?
Yes.
And can I, should I ask a question about this, or do we wait until contract is up for renewal to bring up a question?
To, meaning you want to change it or?
Well, I'm just wanting to know if that's adequate. What does that cover for an officer per year? I mean, is it giving them two pair of pants and a shirt and a pair of shoes? Roots or?
They're allocated the $400 and $50 per year, and it's up to them to stay within that amount. If they don't use it, they can carry it over to the next year. But it's pretty much used to purchase, you know, whatever items they would need moving forward. When you have a new officer though, they get their equipment from the general uniform account while they're on probation.
Okay. Do we ever have officers spend more than that? I mean, out of their own pocket to buy uniforms because they want something that they, is not in their budget?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
We've given a couple of times, but.
I think they, if they were gonna, if they were going to purchase something extra, Eric, my guess is it would be for the smaller, smaller things that, you know, I, I want this particular thing, so I'm going to buy it for myself. In terms of the pants and the shirts, coat, stuff like that, I think.
This is adequate to cover those needs?
I think so. I, I have, I'll tell you, you know, if I, if I were to ever see somebody that I thought looked unkempt or unprofessional, I would say something to that individual. I would say, you need to go out and get a new shirt, or you need to go out and buy a new pair of pants. I haven't seen that. I think everybody is being adequately outfitted. Nobody has mentioned to me in my time here that, you know, that, that the amount is not adequate. So, again, I can, I'm more than happy to bring it up at the next step.
Well, I just know it's been that dollar amount for quite a while. And I just didn't know it.
And my guess is, my guess is it'll go up, you know, or they'll ask for more in the next bargaining session.
That's why I didn't know if I wanted to even bring it up right now.
It's a fair, it's a fair point. I mean, we also, you know, we also have to make sure that they're, they have adequate supplies. You know, that's a fine line there when you bargain with them over that.
All right.
Anything else? Okay, we'll go on to item F, Emergency Government, page forty-one. So, this is Dane Com?
This is Dane Com. This is where it's going down for at least one year, and we'll, we'll see what happens in 2016, so.
We'll hope David Donovan's watching.
You know, I always think of David, I do, I know.
Just to brief you a little bit, and Mike touched on this earlier. County Exec Parise recently came out, probably about a week ago, and had, was, announced that he was putting into his 2015 budget the addition of, of some additional towers, infrastructure to bring Dane Com up to the level that was initially requested. I think this was back in 2006 or 2007, when the first study was done on, on what kind of system we should have in Dane County to be able to comply with federal requirements that were, I think, were supposed to be in place by 2010. And, and because of, because of cuts at that time, as you can imagine, '07, '08, there wasn't, nobody had any money anyplace. So, initially what was proposed was that there were going to be twelve towers built within Dane County, which would provide this standard of coverage that was requested. What we ended up with was four towers. And since they've been trying to, since they've been testing Dane Com, it has not, it has not gone well. And what the fire chiefs and the police chiefs and the EMS folks have been continually telling the folks at the county level is that this, this isn't working, it's not acceptable. And you've seen, you've seen some of the folks on television recently talking about all the problems that they've had during this testing phase, where they, where they can't communicate with the 911 center when they're asking for help. County Exec Parise, I think took the right step. It was a very bold move. I think it was the right move in announcing that, that he was going to move forward and we were going to get the twelve towers built. That was a good thing. Now, unfortunately, right on the heels of that, he announced that he wanted to make the 911 Center Governing Board. He wanted to strip their, right now, their authority and change it to an advisory group. And that hasn't gone over well with the fire chiefs, the police chiefs and the EMS folks.
And the city of Madison.
And, yeah, and the city of Madison, who's really left out in the cold. There, at some level, and I think his, his motives are not necessarily bad. He, he thinks that the 911 Governing Board is cumbersome, it's too slow to react. It doesn't have, while it has the authority to make decisions, it doesn't really have the resources, they can't mandate really anything. I mean, it, they can't say, well, we want twelve new towers, so we're going to have twelve new towers. He wants to be able to respond when there are issues of public safety, wants to be able to say, well, you know, if I have that authority, I can make that change, I can fix it. And while that isn't necessarily a bad thing, you know, if you flip it over and you get somebody in that position that isn't public safety minded and doesn't care what the advisory board is telling him or her and begins acting more like a politician than somebody that maybe has the best interests of, of all the citizens in mind, you can see there could be, there could be problems. So, I think it's not so much a matter of what, what he wants to do, it's a matter of, of the how. And I think right now, all the, the first responder associations are a little miffed that there wasn't any discussion prior to this. And of course, now they feel like they're being held hostage with the, with the tower improvements. You know, it's like, well, if you don't go along with this, then I'm not, then I'm going to pull back the, you know, the additional eight towers or whatever. So, it's, I think we could have gotten to where he wants to get to had there been some discussions with all the stakeholders in advance. And because right now, everything feels rushed. There's going to be a hearing from the, at the Safety Committee, the Dane County Safety Committee meeting tomorrow. meeting tomorrow afternoon, and then it's gonna go to the board before the end of the, the month. So, every, everybody feels like they're under the gun and that this is, you know, a little bit like extortion. So, I think that's, that's kind of where we're at now. So, and, and Dane Com, the last I heard is Dane Com isn't gonna be operational for a year at least.
That's amazing.
This is somewhat, basically what happened, let's see, twenty, you know, 2010, 2011, when Kathleen was in office, and same sort of approach. And it, right away, the whole environment is just, it's difficult to have good conversations and...
We're, we're in a lot pla, we're in a lot better place now than we were back then, though, because then it was really the, the county execs office versus all the, the towns, villages, and cities.
Yeah.
And now, you know, we had just gotten to a, a point, I thought, where everybody was on the, kind of on the same page. But now, the, the trying to take the authority away from the governing board isn't, I, I don't think is sitting well with, with most of the municipalities. So, I, you know, I, I would like to think that we can get through this, but I, I don't know how that's gonna be accomplished within the next two weeks.
Yeah, nothing's happened that fast in Dane Com, I don't think.
No.
Other questions on this? Okay. See what the ongoing reports are. I've been saying that for a long time.
That was actually, that was an excellent description, Dale.
Really is, that was great. Hit right in the head.
Okay, we're going to item, Crossing Guards on page forty-two. And as we start that, we'd like to thank them for their service in the morning and, and afternoons and out there in the weather.
And Rudy's, Rudy's the, uh, on the supervises the Crossing Guards, so she deserves all the credit for keeping that program functioning.
How's the recruiting going for Crossing Guards?
I just hired, uh, two new ones that you guys approved in August, I believe, and unfortunately, Lisa Fields, got a full-time job, so no, she's not really able to work as a part to be crossing guard. Don Shewes was hired, he's at North Main Street, Grove Street, he's doing a wonderful job.
Yeah, I have noticed a couple of new faces. Sorry to hear one's leaving, right?
We, we have an opening, Jerry.
I was gonna say that, yeah. I'll put your name in, Jerry.
Okay.
It'd have to be approved by us, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll see how that goes.
That's dead. Thank you, Rudy.
Okay. Now, item H, animal control. Not much there, right?
No.
Any questions on that? Item I, Police Special Revenue Explorers Program, Community Policing, and Shop With a Cop, pages one oh-three and one oh-four.
We, on page one oh-three, Lisa, I put the, that information, is I wanted to make sure the board realized that the explorers are paying for the, for pieces of equipment, the, the ranger. I actually, I forgot that they were doing that consecutive years, so I wanted to make sure the board knew that. Very generous of them to do that.
Any questions on any of these items? We'll go on to item J, Police K-9 Fund, page one oh-seven, and this is coming from the September fifteenth finance meeting, review of the use of dog, Ateev Burke's perspective on the K-9 programs. Dale?
Actually, I'm, I'm not prepared to give you a, a good perspective on the K-9 program yet. What we've begun doing is, we're gonna, they, let's put it this way, the, the dog hasn't been used as much as I believe, or other, others of us in the department believe that it could or should be used. So, we're in the process of looking at ways to make better use of the dog. And I'm, I'm hoping that before, before my time here is done, I will be able to tell you with much better information whether the, the program should, should continue or be modified in some way, or whatever. But at, at this point, I don't, we don't have a large enough body of work for me to be able to, to give you an, an accurate accounting of, of the, the dog's usefulness.
So, that will come in time.
It, it will.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I think good data makes a lot of sense.
And I hope, I hope to be able to give you some, some real positive results in the not-too-distant future.
Okay. Sounds like you have some plans.
I do.
I figured that'd be nice.
What we'll do is, we'll just, we'll put that on a, you know, a future Public Safety Committee agenda.
Yeah, okay. You okay with that? Any questions?
No, that sounds just fine to me.
Yeah, good. Good, thanks. Okay, item K, Police Equipment and Fund, four fourteen, pages one twenty-five and one twenty-six.
No? President stating?
Yes, sir.
No?
Have at it.
Again, I pose a question, I pose the same question to the board. How, how does everyone feel about adding a thirty, another thirty-five hundred dollar speed indication sign, radar sign, down by Highway one thirty-eight?
I'd be in favor of it.
Yeah, I like those signs a lot.
Yep.
And I shouldn't say this here, but I slowed down coming into town a lot better now than I used to.
Well, I, I, you know, again, I probably said this in this meeting before, but I, I remember when the first one was put in a couple of years ago, or four years ago, a while ago. And if you come home, or come into Oregon from the north, heading south, and you, you just see the brake lights start lighting up.
Yeah.
You know, when they, when they see that sign. So, I, I think not only the Ash Jefferson's won, but also one out on Highway one thirty-eight.
Then one on Highway fourteen, where the speed limit drops from sixty-five to fifty-five would be good, too.
Do you, do you think we get a discount by getting two, you think, Rudy? No, you don't think so?
I, I think we're gonna, I think we'd need more than a speed sign up on fourteen.
Yeah.
We might need some spike strips or something.
What's the cost for those signs?
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
Wow.
I'll, I'll tell you, Jerry, you know, I, I come in from the north every day, and I must admit, I have never seen a sign that has a bit, bigger impact on traffic anywhere. It, it, it's amazing to me, the effectiveness of, of that sign. It, it really does work.
Yes, it does.
Right.
Do you go through a screening process to evaluate a particular location as, as to whether it would be suitable for that kind of thing?
Um, well, I, I, I think, you know, the, the fact that, that they are entry points into the village, and, you know, I, I wouldn't be surprised if a year from now, you're advocating for one out on Wolf Street to, you know, coming, coming into town. But, I mean, tho, those, those are very logical places where, where you're experiencing a significant reduction in speed. I think if you were talking about doing something like that on, on one of the, you know, interior streets, I think we'd have to do more research on whether it's advisable to do something someplace else, you know, if it was around a school or, or something like that. But I, I think those places where you're coming into town, and especially because they're essentially highways, where you've got a significant reduction in speed, I, I think, you know, th, those are pretty, pretty much just kind of common sense locations.
You don't have any concerns about if there's too many of them, that there, people will start to ignore them, that kind of thing?
Um, you know, we, we could certainly evaluate that. You know, if you wanted to do one now and then wait six months before you put the next one in, or something like that, you know, we, we could certainly look at that. Like I say, I'm just, I'm, right now, I'm just going based on, on what I, what I see every day on, on North Main Street, and it's, it's, it's really phenomenal.
I think what grabs you is, if you're speeding a little bit, even one mile an hour, the thing just, it turns red and just starts flashing, you know? So, it gets your attention.
You might as well have a finger like...
Right. It's like you.
I, I think on the, on Jefferson, are we gonna, we're gonna put it on the west side of the crosswalk? Is that the idea?
I think that's it.
Because I think that's, you know, it would, the point is to try and get people to slow down. There's a lot of people, as Rudy knows, where you live over there.
Right, right.
Cross to get on by the park there, and it's, it's the slow people come, you know? But then, so you, you had the same argument, we've had complaints that it's very hard to cross on Park and Janesville Streets, so if there was a sign over there, so it, it's the same argument, yeah.
Yeah. I've seen smaller ones, too, that attach to, like, light poles that municipalities are using. Now, I don't know if the cost is any less, or how effective they are. I mean, they, they operate the same way. They, if you're speeding, they turn red, they flash in at you, so that might be an option.
Yeah. And I think Doug brings up a valid point about, you know, let, let's not go overboard too quickly, because you, you don't, you, you want people to pay attention to the, to the ones you have and understand that, you know, this is, this is different. If you start seeing them all over the place, then nobody's gonna pay any attention.
You know, speaking of that, when the one on Jefferson and Ash, I know we've gotten a lot of complaints out there for people that do wanna cross there.
Cross there, yeah.
I'm just wondering if it would be more beneficial to put at that intersection, like the yellow lights that we have right here, for pedestrians? And put the speed sign someplace else? Because already, you're, you're quite a ways into the village already when you get to that point.
Yeah.
But I think the speed limit changes about halfway between there and Alpine Parkway. So, I don't know.
But it's plenty.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe something like that would be better than the sign. I don't know.
I think that's worth looking into. You know how much those are, Rudy?
I don't know what those are.
I know there are new ones now that we have downtown. They have rectangular lights, and they really light up.
Well, like, I don't know if you've noticed, when you're on, on PD, and they have enough for the bike trail, they, they, they really, they grab your attention.
They even stop traffic on PD, which is pretty amazing.
They do. Yeah, it's an interesting idea, yeah.
We, we could certainly look into that and see what the expense would be.
So, Mike, how do you do this budget-wise, not knowing, number one, if we want, which we wanna do, and how much it might cost?
Well, I, I wanted to, I wanted to mention some to the board. Jeff brought up a good point about going through this first time. So, I mean, so the board would vote on this.
Yeah.
Then, as I always do on the, the third meeting on the twenty-second, I have an item on there that allows you to go back and look at anything that you've approved or not approved.
Yeah.
And then you still have the ability to then vote on the preliminary budget, but then you also have another shot at it on the seventeen, so you have numerous times you can make adjustments to things you've approved. So, you could, you could approve it like this, and you could direct us to, you could prove it as is, and you could direct us to follow up on Eric's suggestion, to look at that, bring that back with the possible sign out. I mean, we could, a number of ways you could do it, so. There's, there's lots of opportunities here.
Anyone wish to make a motion of that effect, like Mike just said?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so we have that motion second to approve this as is, and direct staff to look at the, at the options.
Yeah.
So, we're...
So, I got a little bit lost in the verbiage of the motion. What, what motion did we actually just approve?
It would be to approve items A through K in the Police Department budget, all the ones we've talked about.
I have a few quick questions on page one twenty-five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, this brings it up for more discussion, so.
Before we actually call the vote.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, we won't vote until we're ready to, to be done with that, so. No, but, yeah, this, the motion is for items A through K, also with a directive for staff to bring back some alternatives for light, lights, either for pedestrian crosswalks or the speed signs.
Okay.
That's what the motion is, right? Yeah, okay. So, now we're ready for discussion and questions on any of these items?
So, if I could?
Yeah.
On page one twenty-five?
Yeah.
There's, there's three, three expenditure general ledger numbers that I just wanted to ask for some explanation on. The first is office equipment, right underneath expenditures. The two thousand fourteen projected and the two thousand fifteen, there's a pretty, a big drop there, percentage of total expenses. Do you know why?
That was for the computer upgrade that we did, for the whole village.
And that happened, that happened in fourteen?
Yes.
So, the spike was actually in fourteen, and now we're getting back to normal?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, normally, we budget about fifteen thousand dollars in that account.
Right.
And last year, there was a bunch of, because of the XP, was it XP?
And plus, we bought all the tablets, too.
Yeah, yeah, all the tablets were purchased this past year, and then the Police Department, I think, replaced like four computers or something like that, too.
There, there was a little bit of a disconnect between, and this is no, no reflection on our computer consultant, it was actually disconnected from our side to the computer consultant about what went into twenty fourteen budget. So, Lisa and I met with them back in August, and we have, we have, this number's a lot better number now than we have for twenty fifteen, so that's why it looks like we went over budget, we did over budget in here in twenty fourteen.
Uh, so, thank you for that answer.
Yep.
Uh, the next question is the next line down, Police Department building. The three numbers that I'm trying to understand, the first is the projected, the second is the department head, and then the third is admin.
So, the projection is, that is the projected for the parking lot that the board approved?
Okay, we talked about that in the last...
And, and actually, Mark gave me good news today. We think it's gonna be less.
Okay.
So, that's good. But we're still gonna keep that number right now. The thirty thousand, that's a, that's a placeholder. If you look on the second, on page one twenty-six, Jeff, and the second item down under the footnotes, it's, it's for replacing the chiller.
Okay.
So, you know, I talked to Dale, we, and Rudy, we had it in there, but as it turned out, we, we couldn't afford to do it at this point in twenty fifteen. Now, you know, the, we may come back if we transfer money, as we were saying, from that ATC money. Some of that money may come into here, and we may end up doing the chiller next year, and then we, we come back and amend the budget. But at this point, we're not, we're not planning on doing it next year, if that makes sense.
How come we're doing the Police, the Police Department parking lot again? We just did that not very long ago. Was it that bad?
It's, it's the original lot in two thousand one.
Well, didn't we patch it before this, though?
We, a couple of years back, we did do some...
Yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Well, we did a, like, a surface. This is where you actually had to dig out the soft spots.
I see the lot.
Yeah. But actually, Mark said they approved it today, and some of the spots weren't as bad, so maybe it's not gonna cost us as much, so.
Good.
And this is one of the only parts of the budget where I saw admin didn't reflect department head, or at least there wasn't a number there. Is there a reason for that? That admin is zero?
For, for the chiller?
The twenty fifteen, yeah, but the chiller's...
Because I'm, because in my, my proposed budget to the board, I'm saying, I'm proposing not to do it.
Okay.
Yep. I, I actually, when we were working on it, I actually put it in, and then when Lisa and I finalized the budget, as you can see, if you look at the end there, we were only projected to have sixteen thousand dollars in, in this fund at the end of twenty fifteen. And so, we don't wanna...
And that's with that out?
Right.
Yeah.
So, but, but we may come back if, depending on how much money we can transfer in here, we may actually end up doing it next year, it depends. Or we may, we may try to limp through and do it in twenty sixteen, it's possible.
It's one of those things, we, we know it's gonna go.
Yeah.
Eventually, so we're just, we're, we're hoping that i, if we have to, we can survive another year.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, and maybe this is the same thing.
Mm-huh.
The GL ending eight thirty, street equipment, and the department head is at four ninety, and then admin's at fifty-one, is that just, you've approved fifty-one of the, of the ask so far?
Mark, Mark asked for a lot of equipment, and I, we're giving him fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
He asked...
So, in order to get fifty thousand, you have to ask for four hundred and ninety, so if you want a hundred thousand, you're part of a million?
Over all these years, he's figured out to do it. When he's here next Monday, he, he can certainly go through what I did, didn't put in the budget, so.
No, that's not necessary for me.
Oh.
But...
I, I always allow the department head...
He asked for that we didn't give him.
Well, he, he might wanna tell us.
Yeah, I always, I always tell the department head, "You should talk to the board about it." Because there, there was one time where, many, many years ago, I did not recommend buying a, a new truck, and the board agreed with Mark and bought the new truck. And as it turned out, that was the right decision, because that old truck that I didn't wanna replace died, and that was whenever a heavy snow season, so. So, I always, you know, I always encourage the department heads to talk to the board, and sometimes they get overruled, but usually the board...
Yeah.
Goes with me.
Those are all my questions, thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Other questions? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve the police budget, items A through K, asking staff to present some alternatives for lights for speed and/or pedestrians, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Dale, for your presentation, and Rudy, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Keep moving in that office now. Been moving in that office now, okay? Okay, we'll go to item 13, the clerk's budget, discussion possible approval. That's on pages 17 through 20, includes the clerk's budget and elections. So back toward the front.
This is not too different. I think I just maybe have you look at page 18. Thanks, Dale. Thank you very much. On page 18, we're we're going to be getting a chair for the clerk assistant upstairs and a new recorder. We're going to get away from the tapes to.
Yep, digital.
Digital, going digital. So like when 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 they're when they're typing the minutes, they're going digital.
Yeah.
So that's gonna affect back there?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
I have a question on page 17. Have we gone past that already?
Yep, nope, I'm just pointing out. Go ahead.
I noticed that salaries stayed the same, but health insurance dropped. Looking at the difference between department head and admin.
That was because I think for the I think what we did is for the we have a vacant position right now. We're not quite sure when it'll be filled and we're not budgeting for that position to take health insurance. But if that person does take health insurance, when we hire them, we'll have to find some adjustment somewhere else. Because the person that we had just hired, that person opted not to take it, but she's no longer with us, so we just don't know, so we decided to budget without it.
And so sometimes what we do, Jeff, is we don't budget it because it's like $16,000. It's a lot of money. But then we put a little bit more money in contingency and then if we have to, we transfer money from contingency to cover it.
Thank you.
So we need a motion on the clerk budget, please.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, so we have a motion second to approve the clerk's budget, pages 17, 18, 19, 20. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item 14 is the administrative section.
Elections.
So the first one is village board.
Elections.
This is 15 through 10.
15 through 10.
Do we do elections?
I think no.
No.
I thought that was all together.
I thought we did them all together.
Oh, did we? I'm sorry. Sorry, I was writing.
Did we talk about that?
Well, I didn't know if there's any questions.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to.
There are fewer elections next year.
I read both of those to start.
Sorry, I was I was writing.
That's the discussion.
Anything you wanna go back to on elections? Anyone? Okay, looks like we got it.
Okay, thank you. Well, I got them wrong, let's see here.
Better watch us, Mike. We're gonna get to the end with it with or without you.
I'm trying to stay.
You better pay attention, I'll tell you that. Who knows where we'll go.
Let me, I think I got the wrong page numbers here for you, sorry for that.
It's 15 through 10.
It's 10 through 15.
That's my.
Pages five, five through 10, I believe.
That's my typing, guys.
Matt's memo is page five.
Five through 10, sorry, that's what happens when I do the typing.
It's probably when you get tired.
It's five through 10.
Okay, so the first part is possibly adjusting board salaries. We had this briefly financed and said, let's have it here for the whole board to talk about, so.
It's the same information that you saw before, just so you know.
There's in the packet, there's a list of a lot of municipalities and the population and what they are, so we haven't looked at this since before 2003.
It's been a while.
We had this earlier this year, though, because I remember.
It was it was referred to the budget meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, Jerry, we've not changed it.
Oh, I thought you meant the schedule.
No, we haven't changed it since.
No, 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 it's been a long time.
That was when I first came on, it's still the same, so.
You're right, see, 2003, right?
Yep.
So discussion, suggestions?
The obvious thing that jumped out at me is that our our village president is underpaid.
Some are saying overpaid.
Well, yeah, you could, I guess, but not this year.
And I think I think when Matt was here, I included his email was, I think Jeff asked a question when this went through about how can you vote for and, you know, your raise? And so this is explains how it would happen if you decide to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it takes effect after the next election.
Yeah, and prior to nomination papers.
Right, yeah.
I thought it was after the next two elections.
It does, it takes two, yeah. You have to get re you so you you have to do this before December.
The whole board would have to have be elected before.
You gotta go through two cycles.
And that takes two cycles to get the whole board reelected, yeah.
That'll be a while.
Is there a recommend is there a recommendation from staff as to what the amount would be?
This is a board this is a board item.
Mike's still got that.
I'm not getting in the middle of this, sorry.
You know, my thoughts on it are I don't I would like to see more competitive elections in the village. I'd like to see more people taking interest in getting on the board.
Yeah.
And if this would affect that, then I'd be in favor of it, but honestly, when I first got on the board, I thought it was a volunteer board. So I wasn't motivated by the salary.
That is not not to give my influence, but that is the known reaction from people. When so many we make them fill out a tax form, they go, why will you get paid? They don't even know they get paid.
Right, yeah. I think that's pretty common.
Yeah.
And then you hear comments that said, well, that's why you got on the board, because you're getting paid. No.
No, no, I have never heard anybody run for the not I'm not saying I'm not disagreeing with you, Jeff, I'm just saying, I've never anybody said that I ran for the board for the money. It comes out to about like a dollar an hour or something or whatever you're making, how hours you put in.
For sure.
I do believe that, you know, there are some people that when you get when you like serve, Jerry, I don't know, how do you get paid for the county board? Do you get a per diem for a meeting?
You get a per diem if it's not your standing committee. You get appointed to a committee that's not your standard committee, you do get a per diem.
Okay, because there's some county boards, if you you have there's if there's lots of meetings, you can make like 35 or 50 bucks a meeting and so some people, there's lots of meetings.
Well, that's what it says, like, and here's some of the villages, you get $30 per meeting.
And so we used that's what we used to do. We used to pay the boards and we had to keep track of that and then we had to try remember who was at the meeting, who wasn't. So we that was one of the things we did is we switched to it. You know, it was interesting because, you know, some people said, well, then what about if people are missing meetings and they're still getting paid? Well, then that's a board matter, you know, and that really has not that has not been a problem. I mean, actually, what happens is that most of the time for committee meetings, most of the board is here anyways, so.
I'll just voice my two cents worth. I think earlier in the year, we decided not to paint the offices upstairs because we were short of money. Like I said, you know, we were gonna clean the carpet because budget were tight.
For the deficit for this year, yeah, yeah.
And like I said, I don't know anybody that signs up to do this for the pay. I would prefer to just to see it for not to see an increase, but that's my two cents worth, so.
Is that two cents per meeting or?
Yeah. Yeah.
We're all pretty quiet, so I think we're moving on.
Yeah, it's hard to discuss giving yourself a raise.
It is, it's tough to do that.
Well, we're not really giving ourselves a raise, we're giving somebody four years from now a raise, yeah.
But it's perceived as giving ourselves a raise.
So since we're all so quiet, I'll make a motion, we move on.
Okay. Next is municipal court, page 11.
Doesn't Beth usually come to these meetings or?
She hasn't recently. I mean, and really, she she basically has kept her budget, and if you look under office supplies, Eric, although we don't know repair and maintenance, it's exactly the same, so it's it's pretty pretty consistent budget.
Any questions?
Where are you looking?
On page page 11. When you look from you go from office supplies down to repair and maintenance, she didn't she didn't increase any of those items from 2014 to 2015, there's no changes.
So, yeah, so the way I the way I was reading it, she actually asked for less and then you bumped her back up, is that right? Again, it's just procedural in terms of me reading these budgets and understanding.
You know, that may be I actually, that may be a little bit of a a little bit of a typo, because she she asked to have it remain the same, so, well, you know, we'll probably adjust that when we print this.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I was reading it the right way?
You were in right, yep, mhm.
And then training, same thing?
Yes, that whole that whole column, we'll go back and adjust.
Beth did this by herself or does she have her assistant help her?
The budget?
No, Beth Cox for the court. I mean, does she do the court by herself?
She has Dennis Geske, who works full time, and then there's a part-time person.
I was thinking maybe she has her assistant that helps her, the other lady that.
Oh, yes, yeah, there's another person down there, too.
Yeah, right.
Yep, yep.
Anything else on the court?
What are the other contractual services? What is it? Do you know what that covers, the $15,000?
That is for it's called the peer court.
Oh, okay, yep, I know.
And then there's there are copiers in there and then I actually, I did email her today. I wanted to make sure that this is a good number. There's there's another, yeah, there's another program that's in there for her tracking court documents that I wanna make sure that's a good number, so that that may that $15,000 may change when you see it again. At this point, I left it in there. But I think the big number is the peer court that we pay out of that.
Other questions? Seeing none, we'll go to item E, C, the legal budget, 12, 13, 14, and 15.
The main the main item I wanna point out is on page 14, under personnel, this is the labor budget, this is a legal budget, it's gonna be for the labor attorney. And so it's it's up because this is we're gonna be using Kyle to help us update the employee handbook. We have we have like about four or five policies we have to update as part of, you know, coming out of the investigation. And then also, we're gonna have labor negotiations with the police union next year, so that's why it's up, up to $25,000.
Is that enough?
I think so. I hope so.
Other questions or comments on the legal? Then go to administrator, page 16.
I don't know, I think we'd better go line by line on this one.
Thank you.
Sean, given the all the department head and the admin lines are the same.
That is amazing, isn't it? The same person's working on the budget.
Mostly salary, let's move on.
Thank you. I'd have been disappointed, Steve.
Yeah, sure you would. Item E, computers, page 21.
This is the comment that we were we were making in response to the computer question and that I think Jeff had it on in 414, where we have a better count now from between the computer consultant and us about what we're paying per month for their for our service. And I'll be I'll, you know, this other this yesterday, I received an email that the our email system went down and he came down to the police station because the charter modem was was off, so we get very good service from computer magic.
Yeah.
So how did you receive an email that the email system went down?
After he fixed it.
Oh, okay.
It was it was.
I was gonna say, that's pretty good.
Yeah, it's pretty magical, yeah.
Magic.
Also, my phone started buzzing during the packing, going, what is going? And I realized the emails were down, I was getting all these emails.
Well, it's computer magic.
Computer, thank you, you're right.
Where are they located? Are they local or?
McFarland. They're they're close by.
Are they getting a spiff for this public service?
You're right, that's a good point, that's a good point. We should, we should get a little discount for that, you know.
What are their hours of operation?
I'll give you their phone number.
Okay, it's time for accounting. Item F, pages 22 and 23.
So this is the budget we pay the auditor out of and then I think Lisa and I wanted to note that we have put the the five-year update with Elders, our financial advisor, in here for next year. I think we should we should be trying to do that next year as we look at doing some bonding and borrowing over the next couple of years. It'll be important to update that.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
So this represents two people, two staff?
It's about two and it's over two staff. It's myself and it's Beth and then it's part of Joy's time, too, round three accounting.
Other questions?
2,500 for Elders' five-year plan, that's not bad.
Well, they they have a lot of the information already and then and then we'll send them, I mean, Lisa and I will send them the Excel spreadsheets, Jerry.
Okay.
I mean, I actually, we're starting to actually work on what we're gonna give to them versus like we don't just hand them the capital improvement plan, we we'll give them a lot of information.
Okay, so you you do a lot of the legwork for them.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that right?
Any other questions? Okay, we'll go on to item G, the assessor, page 24.
I think we want to note here under the footnote that the staff is gonna recommend that we discontinue the full assessment after 2015. 2015 is the last year of the of the contract with Accurate and this is, you know, where they're doing the full assessment. We've had Peggy was here, she could give you better stories than me, but the last couple of years, people are just tired of of having the assessor in their house, year after year. And so even after I talked to Lee, our assessor, last year when Peggy was dealing with with this issue and he even he admitted, he said, I think it's time to pull back and not do this for a while. So what would happen is we'd go back to where we obviously still get, you know, the assessor's gonna come out and look at the new buildings and things like that and remodel jobs, but we're not gonna take a quarter of the village and do and do an assessment. So then we will we would have to do is, you know, the state has a rule, I think, if when you go under, I think it's 75 or some percent of the of your value, you have to do a, you know, you have to bring an assessor and do a full assessment again. The the issue is that now with the property tax cap, it'll be a challenge about how we pay for that, because typically it costs about $150,000. But you can see, we're spending $43,000, so, you know, you're you're going out four or five years and you're gonna be paying somebody a lot of money to do that. But I just think it's time to give property owners and residents a break from the assessor. I think we've been doing it for like eight years and it's time.
Right, but in that eight years, I've only had somebody in my house once.
Well, it's, then it's, it's how it's getting rotated. And I, I'll just tell you, the last two years, we've gotten many complaints about it.
Really? Then they're, they're not, they've got faulty rotation process.
Well, there's a, there's some, there's some other reasons why that happened, and I don't want to, you know...
Right.
It, it's just, but, but I guess, my point is that I, I think the value of it is, has been fine, but I, I, we don't think it's... And, and I guess that even the assessors are agreeing that we should probably stop doing it for a while.
But I mean, I remember the logic when we started this program was that, well, what happened is people's assessments would lag way, way, way behind, and after ten years, they'd get assessed, and they'd go ballistic, because their property taxes went up so much.
Well, that, that's the downside. That's, as the market goes up and down, if it's five years from now, and, and depending on what's hot in that market, your value could go up, abs- absolutely. But I'm just saying, that's all right. The thing is, Jerry, this will come back to the board. I mean, we have the contract in 2015. The assessor's contract's going to come to finance and to the board, and if you, the board wants to continue it, that's your decision, but we're recommending not, not to continue it. And I, and we should probably have Peggy here to talk about it, too. She dealt, dealt with a lot more.
I would like to hear, I would like to hear what she has to say, because, again, if you want to take a breather for a couple of years, I'm fine with that, but I remember...
Oh, absolutely.
How bad it used to get, when somebody would get an assessment after.
They're down twenty-five percent.
Right.
Yeah.
And, you know...
Well, the thing is, the board, the board doesn't have to wait till you get down to the upper, you can, you can do a reassessment when it hits eighty-five percent. You, you don't have to wait that long.
I think if we're ever going to start that program again, though, we should refine how they select people. Because if the same people are getting selected year after year after year, there's something wrong with the selection process.
It, it's going to be a good finance committee item.
Good.
Yeah.
I'm glad you asked.
See, he asked for it.
Well, how many times did people get, uh, assessed? Like Jerry said, I, I think we only got assessed one time out of eight years.
That, I, there's some, there's been, I, you know, again, Peggy's the one that deals with it. She should come to, come to finance, and, yeah.
Hey, I'm fine with this written off.
Well, it, well, it's in, like I said, it's in, we have the contract with Accurate for 2015, so it'll be a thing that we'll talk about in 2015, going forward.
That's fine.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to item H, soda machine, page twenty-seven.
This is probably the most difficult one to understand, yeah. I'll let Candy talk about it.
Any questions, Jerry?
Not so far. Let me, let me ponder a little bit.
Okay, we'll come back to it for you. Item I, other general government, page twenty-eight.
So, so right now...
I can tell somebody's fresh tonight.
Finally.
So right now, we have contingency, um, in my column at twenty-three thousand seventy-nine. And what Lisa did here, if I'm, I think I'm correct here, is, again, this goes back to Doug's question about the explanatory restraint program. So, so that's, that's the number that we're plugging to make sure our general fund is right at the max. So that number will go up and down as we, as we define the general fund. That makes sense. Okay.
Any questions? Item J, illegal taxes. It's a funny term.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it seems kind of...
This is, this is one there's a, you know, mistake on somebody's property tax bill. It happens once in a while, and it is a very strange title we have to use.
Item K, insurance, page thirty.
So this is all of our insurance, right?
Well, there's insurance in...
There's other insurance scattered throughout the budget, like the auto, the auto insurance is scattered throughout the budget for each different department.
Okay.
What's the crime insurance on?
I think that Peggy's the one that deals with the insurance, so I just plugged the numbers in. I'm trying to remember, the crime insurance is for...
Is that, is that for protecting somebody that steals money?
Yeah.
I think it's for embezzlement, I think it's for...
Yeah.
Yeah. But we, we can get a, I'll, I'll ask her.
Yeah, I don't remember what that one is.
Good question, Doug. You stumped us there.
Any other questions on insurance?
And what, what's the big difference between 2014 and 2015 and the property insurance?
Is that the rate rule?
Over twenty thousand?
Oh, I think that, is that where we charge in the rate rule, too?
I think so.
Oh, the rate rule insurance.
Oh.
Because we won't have that anymore.
Oh, yeah. I, I think, yeah, because what we did was, we only budgeted for half a year in 2014. And actually, we're going to be getting a little bit of a refund on that. I have to give Tony Roach some credit, the administrator in Pittsburgh. He's been trying to, you know, we canceled the insurance when they activated the line, and so now we're going to get a little refund on it, which is kind of nice.
Great.
Any other questions on insurance? Go to item L, planner, page eighty-eight.
I was wondering when we were going to jump around again.
I know, I would, too.
Well, this is, this, this is usually the catch-all. We, everything else is under department budgets. The planners, this is, you know, pays for Mike's lab, need to come to the plan commission meetings, and, and we are trying to, um, work on having the commission, and then obviously the village board adopt a new site ordinance. We've been talking about this for the last ten years, so we're starting to work on it. And actually, Mike just did this in, I think he said, cross plane, so we're probably going to u... It is, yeah, we're going to probably use that as a, as a sample, so we may actually save some money, to be honest with you. We'll be going to that with the plan commission next year.
Other questions? So item M, general fund transfer to other funds, page ninety.
This is, if you look under the footnote, this is the money that's coming out of the general fund, going for the general fund share of purchasing the domedial property. Fifty-five thousand dollars going to fund four twenty-six. That's to continue the work, as I talked about in my overview, with the stakeholders on the east side of fourteen. And then, four, four oh five is street improvements. This is money coming from the general fund, going into the street improvement fund for, uh, street work next year.
Okay. Any questions or comments? We'll go to item N, then, possible consideration of agenda items A through M, so we need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions, Jerry?
Lisa, do any of these budgets reflect anything with my wife that we talked about tonight?
Um, the accounting? Yes, oh, yeah, the accounting one.
Okay.
Part of her salary is charged there.
Can we change the motion then to reflect everything except for that one item, so I can vote on that, and then you can vote on that one separately?
Okay, so pull item F off.
That's what I would like, Lisa.
Yeah, item F, problem with that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Just a point of order. I believe Jerry made a motion regarding, uh, the village board salary question, but it was never seconded or followed through on.
Well, it wasn't really. We didn't really need it.
Yeah.
We just moved on.
I ignored it.
You blatantly ignored it.
Before he had a vacation, he would have went with that. He's sharp again.
He's become French.
Yeah.
So we're excluding F?
We leave.
Yes, excluding. A through M excluding?
And Carpenter seconding?
Well, and I'll amend that, I'll amend my motion, uh, motion to accept item fourteen, A through E, and J, and G through J. I'm sorry, G through N.
Okay.
As presented.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. That's okay.
And I agree.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And now I'll make a motion to accept item fourteen F as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Yeah, we show Eric abstaining.
Yep.
Yep. Uh, item fifteen, our next budget meetings, October twentieth and twenty-second. Item sixteen, a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Whoa, listen to that. Somebody want to second it over there?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Steve, you made it.
Check the time, folks.
Five minutes.
That may be a record.
Five minutes.
That may be a record.
This is, you might want to think that it's probably a little bit out of season, but I got my chicken coop cleaned out. My barn needs some refurbishing before the snow flies, but I do have all the hay that I need. So I pulled this up and this is a poem of April to remind us that despite the fact that winter is coming, spring will always follow. Welcome spring, Orion, the hunter leaves the sky. Robins, cranes replace his watch. Trees, flowers, grass, the earth awakes.